I've been through it.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. It's the regular assembly meeting, January 17th, 2017. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bob?
Here.
Cindy?
Here.
Jay?
Here.
Nancy?
Yes.
Mark?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Kurt?
Here.
Okay, we have a full assembly with Assembly Member Kurt Walhuder joining us on the phone. So now it's time for the voluntary pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first thing on the agenda today is the borough land auction, and I have asked the clerk to go over the procedure.
Welcome, everyone. I'm just going to read from the instructions that's on the table if anybody would like to grab a copy. The following criteria and procedure will be used for the sale of these seven lots that the borough is offering this evening. A bidder must be physically present at the auction or be represented by a person physically present at the auction who is authorized in writing to execute legal documents on behalf of the bidder. At the time of the auction, the purchaser or purchaser's legal representative shall immediately upon being declared the high qualified bidder sign a contract of sale in the form attached whereby purchaser agrees to purchase the property for the sale price and further agrees to all other terms and conditions set forth in these instructions, Resolutions 2016-23 and 2016-30, Ordinance and Ordinance 2016-14, and in the contract of sale. Any individual participating in the auction must be 18 years of age or older as of the date of the auction. The Assembly does not require the construction of improvements within a specified period of time as a condition of a conveyance of this borough property. The land will be sold as is where is via quitclaim deeds in their current condition and with all faults. The borough expressly makes no representations regarding and disclaims any liability for each property to be sold and/or any improvements located thereon, including but not limited to: One, the condition of the property and any improvements located thereon; Two, the exact location or size of the property; The existence of markers on the property or the ability or cost of surveying of the property; Three, the status or insurability of title to the property, including the existence of any liens, encumbrances, or conditions on the property; Four, the ability of the purchaser to utilize the property and/or any improvements in any fashion and for any particular purpose or use; And Five, the existence or the potential for installation of utilities on or to the property. Each property is sold subject to all platted easements, rights of way, and reservations, and may only be used for the purpose for which it is zoned. Each property is sold expressly subject to all liens, encumbrances, and conditions of record or not of record, including but not limited to matters which would have been disclosed by a survey or physical inspection of the property. The borough makes no representations, warranties, or guarantees, expressed or implied, as to quality, merchantability, or suitability of the property for a particular purpose or use. All bidders should personally inspect the properties and make their own determination as to whether the land will meet their needs. The purchaser assumes the entire risk as to a property's quality and suitability for[263.61][263.64]intended use. All future uses of the land must comply with applicable federal, state, and municipal laws. The successful purchaser of any lot will be responsible for obtaining any and all building and use permits, including Corps of Engineer permits if required. A successful bidder shall pay a minimum of 5% of a property's total purchase price as a deposit within five business days of the auction, so by 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 24th, 2017, and the remaining balance in full within 90 calendar days of the auction by 5:00 PM on April 17th, 2017. If an appeal of the bid award is filed under Petersburg Municipal Code 16.12.120, the deposit is due from the successful bidder within five calendar days of the decision on the appeal by the Assembly, and the remaining balance is due in full within 90 calendar days of the Assembly's decision. A quitclaim deed shall not be issued until payment in full of the purchase price has been made. If a purchaser fails to make payment in full within the 90 calendar day period, the deposit is forfeited to the borough unless an extension of no more than 10 calendar days to pay the balances authorized in writing by the borough manager. A property not sold at the public auction may be sold on a first come, first serve basis using the application and review procedures of Petersburg Municipal Code Chapter 16.12. In the event a purchaser defaults by either failing to timely make the required deposit or by failing to pay the remaining purchase price within the required period, the purchaser shall have no further rights to purchase the property under the auction, and the property shall become available for over the counter sale on a first come, first serve basis for the amount equal to the high bid offered at the auction. In the event that more than one offer is received by the borough on the same calendar day for purchase of a property, the purchaser shall be chosen by lot. The borough will not finance any portion of any sale. All successful bidders must seek or provide for their own means of full payment for the land by the required date. So anyone acting as a representative or agent for another party must provide the borough with a notarized power of attorney form, and I should have that now. So if there's anyone here that is bidding for someone else and has not provided me with a power of attorney form, please raise your hand. Okay. Anyone acting as a representative must present their executed power of attorney form to the borough clerk. Oh, I already said that. All persons participating in the auction will be required to sign a participation agreement indicating they have read and understand the procedures and requirements as expressed in this document. So if there's anyone here that will be bidding that has not filled out an auction participation agreement, please raise your hand and let me know, and we'll get that done. Okay. The order in which the lots will be sold shall be determined by lot. So basically, we have each address on a piece of paper in here, and we'll draw it out and then have the auction go forward. So I think I'm ready.
Okay, sounds good. So when we get to the point, we'll, like the clerk said, we'll draw randomly, and we'll announce the direction or the description of the first lot drawn, and then we'll call for an opening bid, which is the minimum amount. Bidders are asked to stand and be recognized. Requests for higher bids will continue until finished. Bids shall be made in increments of no less than $100. When the bidding appears to be done, bidders will have three chances. I'll make three calls to top the most recent highest bid. The highest bidder for the first lot will be announced, and the auction will continue as outlined above until each lot for each lot available for sale has been auctioned. Announced high bidder for each lot will sign the contract of sale. And once the auction is done for all seven parcels, the successful bidders can go into the Assembly Office over here with Debbie and take care of the paperwork, and we'll continue on with our meeting. So, let the fun begin. First lot is 705 Ira Street, parcel number 01-006-484. It'd be easier if we could do it in order, but we can't, so. Is there anybody interested in bidding on the 705 Ira Street?
Ira 2.
Ira 2 Street.
Minimum bid $40,500.
Correct. Okay, I guess that will be put aside and could be available over the counter. Next parcel, please. Okay, next parcel for bid is 919 Sandy Beach Road, parcel number 01-014-125, and the minimum bid on that lot is $182,000. So any interested bidders, please stamp. Carol, what's your bid? Okay, we have a bid of $182. Is there a higher bid? Pardon me? Anybody else? $600? Okay. Is there a microphone we could put back there, or maybe just? $182,600? $183,000 is the high bid so far? $183,500? Okay. $184,000 is the current high bid? $185,000 is the high bid? $186,000? $187,000? $187,500? $188,500 is the current high bid? $189,000 is the high bid at this time? $190,000 is the high bid? Any other bids? $191,000 is the high bid? Any higher, any more bids? $192,000, do I see any higher bids? $192,500 is the high bid? $193,500 is the current high bid? $194,000 is the high bid? $195,000? $195,500 is the high bid at this time? Probably $196,000 was a? $196,000 is the bid? $196,500 is the high bid? $197,500 is the high bid? $198,000 is the high bid? $199,000 is the bid? $199,500 is the high bid for Sandy Beach Road? $200,000 is the high bid for parcel 919 Sandy Beach? I'm going to get confused. $200,100 for Sandy Beach Road? $200,500 is the high bid? $200,600 is the current high bid? $200,800 is the bid for Sandy Beach Road property? So, $200,800 is the current high bid, going once?
I'd like to go $200,801.
Sorry.
In increments of $100. So, $200,900?
Excuse me, I do not have a participation agreement signed.
All right, please.
Okay, thank you.
So, is the paperwork up to snuff, Debbie?
My glasses on. It is.
Okay, so we have a current high bid of $200,900. $201,000 is the high bid? $201,000?
$202,000.
$202,000?
$204,000.
$204,000 is the current high bid for the Sandy Beach Road lot. $205,000 is the high bid on the lot? Is there any other high, any other bids? $205,000 going once, $205,000 going twice, sold to Carol Jensen for $205,000. Okay, so... The next parcel, please. 705 North Fourth Street, parcel number 01-002-262. Make sure I got the right number right, and the minimum bid on that is $8,810. Okay, the current high bid for the 705 North South Street is $8,810. Is there any other bidders? Any other bidders on 705 North Fourth Street? $8,810 going once, going twice, sold for $8,810. Okay, next property, please. 703 North Fourth Street, now we're getting them in order, parcel 01-002-263, and minimum bid for that lot is $8,810, and that is zoned, single-family residential. Okay, we have a bid of $8,810 for 703 North Fourth Street. Is there any other bids for that parcel? Okay, $8,810 going once, going twice, sold. Next one, please. 701 North Fourth Street, parcel 01-002-264, and the minimum bid on that lot is $8,810. Sounds familiar. Any other bids for the lot? Eight, Block 76, 701 North Fourth Street. $8,810 going once, going twice, sold for $8,810. Next parcel is 306 Sandy Beach Road, parcel 01-003-521. The minimum bid on that lot is $68,000. Any interest in the audience to bid on this lot? Okay, seeing no bidders, that will be sold over the counter. And that leaves us with one parcel, I believe, if I keep the track right. This parcel is 1199 Hoggin Drive, parcel 01-006-442, and the minimum bid on that is $275,000. Okay, the opening bid on this lot is $275,000. Any other interested parties in the audience? Seeing none, it's sold for $275,000. Okay, we'll wait until people can regroup and go meet with the clerk next door. So you go out the door in the back and hang a right, and you'll find the place.
Yeah.
I'll go, I'll go out, I brought my keys.
Need anything, Debbie?
No.
Nope, I'll come back for the rest.
Okay, don't do that very often. So, on with the meeting. Entertain a motion for approval of minutes for the January 3rd, 2017, regular meeting and the minutes of the January 3rd, 2017, special meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion's been made by Member Gregor, seconded by Member Lynn. Any changes to those meeting minutes as recorded? Okay, we'll move forward, but we'll log those as correct. Any amendments to today's meeting agenda, or entertain a motion for approval of the meeting agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, all those, no changes? So all those in favor of moving forward with the meeting agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. There are none. Item seven, bid awards, nothing under that item. Item eight, visitors' views related to the agenda. Anybody in the audience with visitors' views related to the agenda?
Changed it, so everybody can get it. Okay, it's me again. Joel Reiner, Lake Street resident, and talked agenda today about the LID and some of the code language. Put my Captain Obvious hat on here for a minute and just go over some of this, but LID is in the borough code, and there was people here talking last time that wanted it to go forward, and they can still do that, as far as I understand it. So I'm not here to try and stop any neighborhood from going forward. They can, if in all agreement, go forward and petition and have their project taken care of. They initiate this usually with a petition and the petition process. Creation of an LID is a majority rules concept, however. The LID will affect the entirety of a neighborhood that's creating it, and the neighborhood may not have 100% agreement to form it. If the minority of no votes in that neighborhood falls within the borough ordinance that you'll be covering later in the meeting, that property owner will still be obligated to pay for it, and that's the part that I'm concerned with. One person that doesn't want to form an LID in a neighborhood that wants to will have to pay for it. And I just, maybe everybody knows that already, I thought I'd just point that out. And as far as I can tell, I think Article 16, Section 1605, it looks to me, and I've talked with Carl about this too, that seniors are not exempt from paying for this. They do have an exemption for property tax, but, and I, please correct me if I'm incorrect, but seniors and will have to pay for this, so if they're in that neighborhood and they have an LID formed, they'll have to pay for it whether they have the exemption or not for just their property tax. So, I, since this is rolling forward, I would like to see if it's possible for you to set up a program for low-income property owners and seniors, set up some sort of cost-sharing program along with the LID formation that you're discussing here and fixing up the borough code. Something that they can be able to assist them in paying for a portion or all of any projects that come down the line that will fall into an LID program, and mostly because this Petersburg is, you know, we're a small community. Reason I bring this up, I did talk with almost all of my neighborhood, and, you know, lucky for me, they, most of them don't want to do this, so I won't have to help pay for paving a road, but in a neighborhood that would, you know, we are a small community, and you're going to see these people in the grocery stores, and you're going to be seeing them here and there, and if I was on the other side and voting yes, I wouldn't want to put somebody in a financial hardship. I would like to see a mechanism put in place to help people out with an LID process. That's, that's all I've got, so, thank you for your opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Any questions of Joel? Nope, thanks, Joel. Okay, is there any other visitors in the audience with views related to today's agenda? I don't see many visitors, so. Nope, we'll move on to visitors' views unrelated to the agenda. Anybody want to speak to that? Nobody here, so nope. Board, commission, and committee reports, there are none. Two items on the consent agenda, and since one of them has a dollar value on it, I'd like to handle them one at a time, so I'd entertain a motion to approve item A, that's Sons of Norway 2017 Gaming Permit Application.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving that gaming permit, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Aye. Okay, the next item is authorization to accept additional grant funds in an amount of $111,594.25 for a total award of $260,594.25 from the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, and I think that's going to be used for equipment in the police station.
Correct, thanks to Janet Holton's sharp eye and paying attention. They announced that they had extra money, she threw our name in the hat, and we got it.
Nice. So, any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kurt, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm with you.
Okay.
Yes, I say aye.
Oh, okay. So, report of other officers, mayor's report. We're seeking letters of interest. The borough is seeking letters of interest from Petersburg residents willing to serve on the following boards, commissions, until October 17th municipal election. Hospital board has two vacancies. Letters of interest may be addressed to the borough clerk and emailed to dthompson@petersburgak.gov or mailed to post office box 329, Petersburg, Alaska, 99833, or dropped off at the Borough Administrative Administration Office at 15 North 12th Street. Still looking for someone interested on the Assembly to serve on Historic Preservation Commission. It's a three-year term, that will expire 12/31/2019. Kurt, since you're not here, we're putting your name in.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. In addition, the commission has, still has a vacancy on the Planning Commission. Representative seat, letters of interest may be submitted to the borough clerk as outlined earlier in this report. We have a conflict with the meeting supposed to be on the 20th of February, unless we would still have a quorum in town. I know Steve and I are heading to, are you going as well, Bob? Is there anybody else going? Or anybody going to be not in town on February 20th? That's the date that the meeting should fall on.
Mark, I'll be on the Tanner Crab on that day.
Okay, so you'll be gone, I'll be gone. That leaves four. The four of you going to be in town?
Yes.
I leave the next day.
Okay, well, then there's no discrepancy or no need to change. We'll have the second meeting in February on the 20th. Got an email this week, essential, "The U.S. Department of Transportation has funded essential air service and has re-selected Alaska Airlines." Yes.
Is President's Day a holiday?
It is.
Is it?
I don't know.
Federal holiday.
It's on Tuesday, so that?
The 21st, well, are the same four Assembly members going to be on the 21st?
Yes.
Uh, no.
Okay, well, then we need to reschedule. Good, good catch, Nancy. It doesn't show that on my...
The day planner for the drugstore shows it.
Good. We'll rely on that from now on. So, good plug for the drugstore. So what day works for people in February? Kurt, you'll be gone till, who knows? Are you going to pack just Tanner Crab? We'll be doing Brown Crab, too. You might be gone all month, uh, Monday to the 27th.
From the 17th till probably about the 1st. From the 17th till probably about the Thursday, so.
Okay. We had a suggestion from Member Gregor. What's that?
How about Monday the 27th?
Uh, works for me.
Um, hang on. I don't think.
As long as we have a quorum.
Yeah. I don't think I'll be here.
So, Jay.
We'll call in.
Nancy, be here. I think that would work, if that works for you.
I'm good.
I could call in.
Okay. February the 27th will be the second meeting in a month. Okay. Back to the U.S. Department of Transportation has funded essential air service and has re-selected Alaska Airlines to provide that. The service for Corovia, Gustavus, Petersburg, Grangel, and Yakata for a two-year term from May 1st, 2017 through April 30th, 2019. On the borough land selection side of things, we've been asking DNR, state DNR, to support a request for 14,600 more acres of VUU, VUU land in the, in the borough area. That will, they said they can't support it, but they won't object it. So, won't oppose it. So, we'll hopefully get legislation going in this session that has started today. Also, I'd like to mention, it's been announced around town and different venues, but the Harbor Board meeting about Scalve development is on the 19th, and Dick Somerville from PND will be here. It'll be at 1:00 in this room. So, that's it for the mayor's report. Steve, you were going to give us a little rundown on the building?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Just a couple of quick things. These are not necessarily date order, so I apologize for that. But our building now has an approved fire system, and the elevator is installed and approved and ready to go. Those were both involve getting inspected, inspections and certification. Those are done. Still a lot of finish work and punch list items in the building. The security doors and hardware is a big piece of that, both in the cells and in a couple of the areas in the, in the PD that have to be secured down. So that's a bunch of stuff that has to happen soon. They, we had some concerns over getting all the ductwork and everything inside the building cleaned really well before kicking off the heaters. That's in process as we speak, so they can get the actual HVAC system turned on and operational. Procom, which is the vendor that we, the Assembly awarded to actually set up all the police technology and radios, they showed up today, and they're getting mobilized with all the equipment and starting to work in the server room and in the dispatch area and getting the dispatch console set up. They'll be doing, they'll be here at least through the 1st of February and setting this all up, doing training and making sure everything is configured the right way. Kelly and his team have worked out a plan for the moving of the evidence so that it stays in chain of custody, and that is happening here pretty shortly. Again, kind of the combination of things. Dispatch evidence, prisoners have to move kind of in conjunction with each other in some ways because the dispatcher tends to be in charge of our evidence. The dispatchers are also our jailers, and we can't leave people unattended in the old building. So, all that has to be coordinated, and we're getting closer to having that done. We will have a whole bunch of engineers and architects here in town kind of around February 2nd to begin certifications and identification of punch list items for Phase 1. So, these are the people that were in the plans originally to, to come at this stage of the project and make sure that everything's been built to spec and that they don't see anything that is going to pose a problem for us. So, that will be a busy week or a couple of days while they show up, mostly for the contractor, but our inspector and Joe B. and several other folks will be involved in that. Furniture for the building, other than the dispatch area, is scheduled to be here on January 25th and start installation on the 30th. So, show up. The crew that were actually putting it together and moving it will be here on the jet on the 30th, and they expect to start work that same day. So, at that point, we'll start seeing furniture going into the building. Our biggest concern with that is it's likely punch list items won't be done quite yet, so we're going to have to try to prioritize rooms that have punch lists done, so then the furniture can be put in without slowing the furniture people down. So, we'll figure that one out. We're still trying to get a specific date from the State of Alaska. They have, they've housed a server in the police department for some time that provides services for fish and game, the ferry service, children's services, and a couple other things. They really, they want to go in a different direction with they've done in the past. They've got a GCI fiber line that runs into our police department. They just don't really want to come and deal with it quite yet. We finally got them tied down sometime between, like, tomorrow and middle of February. They're going to show up and take care of what they need to do. The impact on us is it potentially slows down our construction if it's not done when the contractor needs it done. So, we're, we're trying to work with the state to get them a little more specific date and asking the state to work with the contractor to tell them when they're going to be here so that they don't show up and get in everybody's way. But we'll continue to work through that angle and make sure that it's done when we need it to be done. At this point, we're expecting the PD to move into the new space sometime that first week of February. Now, it's that vague because obviously as we start testing technology, if it all goes well and we're fine, then we can move. If some of it doesn't work, we have to step back and fix it before they can actually move. But we're hoping sometime that second, third, fourth day of February, we'll be in a position to switch stuff over and actually do a physical move. Start of Phase 2, which is the existing police building, is scheduled to start February 17th. And basically, it'll start with kind of a combination of demolition as well as asbestos and hazardous material abatement in that part of, part of the building. That'll take some time, and then contractors will start mobilizing back to do actually the work in that, in that area. This is just kind of a, you know, last part of the update. For staff and Assembly members who want a tour of the building, we can arrange that. I ask that you either work through me or directly to Marty. Don't just show up. Let's schedule it. The work site is extremely busy right now. Parking lots full of ice. There's workers coming and going. There's equipment coming and going. We don't want to give a hurt, and we also don't want to get in the way of any of the contractors. So, if you want to tour the building, let us know. We'll make it happen. Best times are either in the morning from 8:30 to 10:00 or afternoon from 2:30 to 4:00. But again, we can make it happen. Just try not to show up there unannounced. It kind of can throw, throw them for a loop at times. And that's it, unless there's questions.
Any questions of the manager on the borough?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Actually, I was referring to the additional $112,000 that Mrs. Holton was able to grab.
Mm-hmm.
What would that have, or what will that purchase that wouldn't have been purchased otherwise?
Well, actually, it's just paying for things that we already purchased, but we were going to use money either from power and light or from the grant itself, the other, the other grant. So, it's a, basically what allows us is more money that we don't either have to borrow or take out of our own property development fund. We'll use it towards that police technology and radio piece and all of the installation, which it's allowed to be, to do it that way.
Excellent.
Any other questions? Steve? Thanks, Steve, for the report.
Sure.
Unfinished business. There's no items listed there. New business, item A, ordinance 17-01, or 2017-01, an ordinance amending Petersburg Municipal Code, Chapter 4.12, Local Improvements, to update from city code to borough code and to incorporate provisions of Petersburg Borough Charter, Article 16, Local Improvement into the borough code. Right? Entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance in its first reading.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made by Member Gregor, seconded by Member Lynn to adopt ordinance 2017-01 in its first reading. Discussion?
Yeah. I've been through this with a little bit of fine-tooth comb here and talked to Carl, probably some others today. I've got some concerns about some parts of it, if we could. And I'd like to kind of walk through a number of sections if we might, if you allow us to do that.
Yeah.
Make amendments to it.
Sure. It looked very confusing. It's been vetted, this is just my two cents, vetted by the attorney and by Carl over, I don't know how many, how much discussion, but, and I think it's all because of what the charter says.
I don't not totally agree with it. Most of it came out.
Well, our attorney's opinion is that that's why.
But I don't think it needs to be that complex, my stuff. But I disagree with our attorney. But anyway.
So, okay. Yeah, go ahead. We'll pick it over. It's numerous pages long.
Let's go, let's go to 4.12.030, if you will, please.
Come again, Bob? Thank you.
Are you referring to the clean or the markup copy?
I'm in, I'm on the markup copy. That's what I've been using. Down under item C on there, where it talks about the petition and capital improvement plan, it goes on, she'll be, she'll be submitted to the borough manager, who will with other borough staff review and analyze documents. I think we need to add something in here into this particular section related to, if we have a group of people come forward with a proposed LID, I think they need to have some response in some reasonable time period. And there's nothing in this ordinance that, that says we have to respond. Now, normally we do that, but I really do think there needs to be something in here. And I would like to add in here that, something to the effect of prepare a response within 16 calendar days. And I talked to Carl today, and he, I think we think that was reasonable to do. So I'd make an amendment to add that.
Correct.
And prepare a response within 60 calendar days to that section.
Okay. So, that is, as an amendment?
Yes. Item C.
So, we have the word. Do you have that copied down there, Mindy? The changes?
Yep.
Cindy?
An, an initial response because under public hearing, there is a time requirement for notification.
There's, there's three, there's about three different time requirements in here as I read it. But I'm just saying, is the initial response, the, the way this reads when I went through it, Cindy, is there's nothing in here that says we would have to go back to them at all within, for a year.
And so what type of response are you looking for? That it's been received, that it's moving forward?
Yeah. It says in here that the petition, it gives in here what we have to respond back on here, and that's, and so I was okay with everything here. I just think there needs to be a timeframe at which we would respond back to them, a reasonable timeframe.
And my question is, that we've received the petition, that we plan to move forward with the petition? What kind of response are you looking?
The response I want is, is that we have our initial draft. You know, we've reviewed it, and we go back with our initial draft to the, to the people.
Because I think I would, I would like, I have a little bit of specificity in that.
Yes, I would agree with that. And I would have to say prepare our initial response within 60 calendar days. I, I would agree with that.
Okay. Maybe it'll be, how many amendments are we going to have? Maybe we should have vote on each amendment as they're.
I have about six proposals.
Okay. Well, maybe we'd be cleaner if we just took them one at a time. So this is to modify Section 4.12.030?
Yes.
And you have the section, Indian, what Bob is asking?
Yes, and that's in C? To put that in C, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I've got it.
Okay. So, we'll vote on that amendment on that section, 4.12.030C, the rewording. Call the roll, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Okay. That amendment passes unanimously, unanimously. So is there any other amendments to the motion?
Go to the same 4.12.030, go to E, and then also go to item 3, where it says the rate or percentage of the total cost to be assessed against each property located within the LID. And then it says, and the estimated amount to be assessed against each property. If I was, if I was one of the property owners there that you're responding back to me, not only would I want to know the full amount that you're, you know, that you're saying it's going to cost me, but I'd also like to get some estimate of what that payback schedule was when you come back to me. And I would like to add a, an addition on to that, which would say, and an estimated, and an estimated payback schedule at the end of that.
Is there another section, Carl, in this ordinance that addresses what the borough is going to set, the Assembly's going to set, is the payback time and amount, other than in this section? I thought I read that somewhere else.
Mr. Mayor, no, I don't think there is. There's a, what Assembly Member Lynn is asking for is just more information. As part of the process, the petition comes in, and there's actually, as part of that petition, there's a, a plan and a cost estimate and a proposed assessment included when it comes to the borough. But all of the property owners may not be represented by that petition. Only 50% is represented at a minimum. So, what Assembly Member Lynn is looking for is to basically come and push that information out to the entire membership of the LID so that they have an idea of what's going on. But I don't think that there is specific conditions of a payback period outlined in here. That would be determined by the Assembly at every.
At a.
LID ordinance. It, it's included in the actual LID ordinance when that's drafted.
So, any discussion on the proposed, is there a second to this motion?
I'll second.
Okay. So that amendment has been made, motion's been made by Member Lynn, seconded by Member Loganakis, to adjust that under 412.030, Section E3.
Okay. So if I'm hearing you right, Bob, you'd want to include various estimates on 1, 2, 5, 10-year payback, or?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just what's expected, you know, when we go back to them is all I'm asking. And I know it can be modified later on, but at least they should have some.
A rough timeline's left.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Does everybody understand the amendment that's been made, the motion? Nancy?
Does there have to be, the time is specified in this, or just that there needs to be one?
No, I'm asking that, yes, that we, we include one back to them, Nancy.
And that would be under the same timeframe that we just approved.
Right, right.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Clerk, call the roll. You have that written?
I do.
Okay. Thanks, Mindy.
Nancy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay. That amendment passed unanimously to change Section 412.030E, item 3, so.
Okay. Next, yes, I have.
Another motion?
If you will, go to 4.12.080. It's Assembly Approval of Project Budgeting. Down under, let me find the sentence here. It's about the second sentence down where it says, "The borough Assembly is not obligated, result of passage of the ordinance under 4.12.060D, to approve the line item amount budgeted for the project and may delete the line item amount if the cost-benefit ratio is determined to be unfavorable, or if," just because, just cause, just causes shown. The question I got into is, if we looked at cost-benefit ratio, each one of us here, I think, would have a different idea of what cost-benefit ratio might be. You got intangibles and tangibles and so forth. And when I read this and I've reread it, I don't really think that that, that whole part is needed at all.
So you're making a motion to break that? So you're making a motion to strike that?
To strike that part of it.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, um, now we carry on with the discussion.
Okay, thank you. And what I would propose is, is that the, um, that we just strike that, that last sentence to there from the city, or from the Borough Assembly on through, uh, through to the end of that. I think that's what we talked about, Carl, was that?
I think you were gonna end, keep the first part of the sentence and then?
Oh, that's, you're correct. I'm wrong.
Project.
Yeah, ended it at the end for the project and put a period there, then strike from, and may, um, may delete from there on.
That's gonna stay in?
Yes.
Tell me again what section we're in?
4.12.080, that's the one paragraph. So then all this change, these changes we make this evening, this, that all has to go back and added by the attorney again?
Yes, sir.
So we might be discussing this again?
Correct. Yeah, we, it, it'll all have, once the changes are made, made and approved by the Assembly, we'll send it back to Sarah. She'll take a look at, at these changes and make sure that she doesn't have a fundamental problem with them. She'll say thumbs up or no, or political language, and then that would come back in your next reading of this.
Will we do that as we move along through the readings?
Basically, we bring it back with the second reading.
Soon as we make it to?
Sarah took whatever you guys approved and changed it to this, or said, no, you can't do it, or said, yeah, that's fine.
So we're just gonna strike the first part of that sentence and leave what's in there, and may, from there on out?
Yeah, yeah, delete and may from there on, yes.
No, I think it's striking the second part of the sentence.
Yeah, 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 striking the second part of the sentence.
Okay, so clerk call the roll on that change?
Kurt?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Is there any more discussion or amendments to the ordinance?
Uh, you?
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I have three more, unfortunately. Go to 4.12.110.
This, Carl, this looks like this, most of this is new, been added, is that?
The, the part that I'm talking about, actually, is many of them are the old part I was looking at.
Sorry, go ahead and make a motion, I guess, if you wanna.
Okay, my motion is, is that, well, let me, let me talk first about, it's the very last sentence in there where it talks about, "If payment is to be in one sum, payment may not be required sooner than 60 days after mailing of the assessment statement. The entire assessment may be prepaid without interest or penalty within 30 days after mailing of the assessment statement, and therefore the assessment may be prepaid in whole or in part with interest to the payment date." I would propose that we delete that because we have procedures in place to do this type of thing. And I can read this and interpret it three different ways. So my proposal, or my motion is, is to drop that last sentence.
Can you give the number again of the section and the code?
4.12.110, item A.
Okay, now I find it. Okay, so the motion will be?
To delete from, if payment is to be one sum, from there to the end of that paragraph.
Okay, a motion's been made, Representative Lynn, and seconded by Member Gregor to delete, basically, the last two or three sentences of section 412.110. Discussion on that?
Yeah, I have a question.
Nancy?
I'm confused about this. Isn't this?
Yes, it's very.
Something that you amended earlier about setting a time for payment?
No, there, there is payment procedures in here. I can show you three different other places. And this is really, when Carl and I looked at it, and I don't wanna put words in Carl's mouth, but we can both interpret it two or three different ways, and it's really not necessary to the ordinance itself. We have, we have other, other sections in here that show the payback and the payback schedule and, and things in, uh, in here.
So if I'm hearing you right on this one, too, the language is confusing and redundant, do you wanna be rid of it?
That's my?
Roger, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the amendment? Carl?
Mr. Mayor, just, uh, point out that the beginning of this paragraph does say that the Assembly shall fix the terms of the repayment. And so really, that covers many things. When you, when you fix the terms in the ordinance that applies to the specific LID, then this last part will assumedly be covered in that.
So if there's numerous LIDs that are proposed to the borough, we have to go over every one and decide the terms and rates for each LID?
Right, yes, and that would be the case.
No matter what.
With or without this language.
Okay, um, any more discussion?
Are you, are you done?
Clerk call the roll on this amendment, please, to section 412.110.
Eric?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Okay, that amendment to section 4.12.110, section A, passes unanimously. Is there anything else?
There is, but I'm gonna let Cindy, cause I need to get my act together here. I have one more.
Um, I have two questions, and I think Carl can easily answer one, and the other one is just, um, to generate some discussion on the public hearing timelines.
Make changes to?
Um, I, I have a question on going back to 4.12.030, which is petition to initiate proposal. In this section, now, we may say it in the charter, but we don't say what the number of petitioners or the number of parcels or the number of owners needed to have a viable petition. And doesn't it seem like it should also be in this? Within the ordinance itself?
I believe, um.
I thought it was in here.
Under 030A, does call out.
Section A, where?
Signed by owners of property that would collectively bear more than 50% of the projected costs of the?
No, it only talks about the cost. It doesn't talk about the number of owners and number of petitioners. Read that again.
Isn't this part?
Signed by, sorry, excuse me. Signed by owners of property that would collectively bear more than 50% of the projected cost of the assessment for the capital improvement.
More than 50% of the people is all it takes?
That's not what it says. It says more than 50% of the cost. So does that, does that track?
And in the ordinance, it does, in the assessment, when we're talking about the assessments and allocation of the costs, we talk about equal shares or frontage or, or what have you, and the, and the default would be equal shares. So if there's 10 lots, there's 10 owners, 50% of those.
But if there's 10 lots and there's not 10 owners, how does that play out? And then we also have the issue of if one lot has multiple owners, we've said later in the ordinance that only one person holds sway over that, but, um, I'm a little uncomfortable with that.
If, if one owner owns two lots or five lots and they approve an LID, they're gonna bear the cost, they're gonna be allocated for every lot that they have, so they will be bearing.
They will be bearing the cost, but my point is, one person owns three lots, one, you know, and one person owns one, they can impose the cost of the improvement on that one landowner. They constitute 75%. Do we wanna set up that kind of scenario? And that's why we're only talking about it in terms of costs, we're not talking about it in terms of petitioners or parcel owners. And, and I think that needs to be ironed out.
So we should have a motion and a second on the floor. Is your motion to change?
Um, I, I don't have a recommendation. I, um, think we need to have further discussion and flesh out what our real intent is there.
May I?
Yes.
Carl, you might correct me, cause you're the, we, the conversations with Sarah. I think this section here is exactly, um, as a result of, because how the charter reads.
It is.
In that the charter talks about the same issue, that it's value, not number of lots, basically. I mean, it, it comes down to evaluation thing. And that's how the charter reads. I think that's why, probably why Sarah wrote it this way.
Yeah.
Cause she's trying to match it to the charter.
It, it's the exact wording that's in the charter.
It is. I'd have, have to say, I have some heartburn with that.
And I'm not sure you can, Carl could better speak to this, I'm not sure you can change that if you move forward with this because of how the charter language is done.
Okay. So it's?
I agree with the manager on that. This is charter language, and, and that was one of the issues with the previous version of the code, that it didn't match up with the charter very well.
So then, um, I'll move on, I'll let that rest. Still have heartburn with it. But, um, I will move on to section 4.12.040 under public hearing. And it specifies that a public hearing before the Assembly shall be scheduled within 60 days of the validation of signatures. But then it goes on to say, "The Borough will send notice of the date, time, and location of the hearing only 20 days prior to the hearing." And I have some concerns that in a fishing community, 20 days is not a sufficient amount of time to let people know if we know 60 days ahead of time when we're going to have the hearing.
I think the lag is, um, I'm gonna say, I think the lag is for, after the petition is validated and the, and the capital improvement plan is conformed. That's not what it says either. It says a 60-day start after that occurs.
I, I would, I would recommend that we up that at least to 30 days, and even then, that may present a problem for some people. But we've heard before from, um, people that they felt that they weren't notified in a timely fashion, or that they couldn't respond to notices because they were out of town. And I would rather give more time than, than less if we're giving ourselves a little bit more time.
Would you, excuse me, would you, um, it has to be held within 60 days, that doesn't mean that we would wait a full two months?
Right.
So if we did it sooner than that, as long as it was a minimum of 30 days notice? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Changing?
My recommendation is to change the 20 days to 30 days, so at least someone has a full month.
So that's a form of a motion for this?
That is correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and that's changing the wording in 412.040, from 20 days to 30 days. I'm not sure what line it's on, but, so, um, any other, any discussion on that? I guess we've already talked about the reasoning why.
We're changing it to how many days?
To 30 days. It's in the middle of the paragraph, and it's written out, it's not written as a number.
They're gonna read not less than 30 days.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
So, um, any other discussion on that change?
Um, I don't know, maybe Carl or Steve, is there any particular reason we had it at 20 days?
I can't speak specifically, but I can't, um, different issue. Our charter calls out some things related to, like petition and initiatives, and matching up those dates with all of the different 60 days here, 30 days here, was absolutely like doing calculus, trying to make it all balance out and make sure you got it at the right day. This is one I'm gonna withhold a lot of statements on. We need to really sit down with a calendar and say, how would this work out? I think your request makes some sense, but I also don't wanna tie staff to an unreasonable response that ends up saying it's almost impossible to get it done. I'm not describing it well, but we ran into that on some of these initiative and petition things that we received in the sense that have to respond within so many days, but the Assembly has to see it before then, and now we had to try to balance an Assembly meeting, when the petition was turned in, and the election, and almost got to a point where we were gonna have to have a special election because of how those dates all lined up. Just wanna make sure this doesn't do the same thing to us. But again, that being said, I think your request is, makes some sense, and you can put it on the calendar and figure it out.
Nancy?
Do we need to indicate whether this is calendar days or business days?
Is it in here now?
Doesn't.
Calendar days works better for us.
Yeah, I think calendar makes the most sense.
Good point.
So, any other discussion on that proposed amendment? Clerk call the roll.
Mark?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Okay, so, any other amendments to the main motion?
Yes. We'll do the 4.12.110, item C. The last sentence on C that was added, it says, "When an assessment is payable in installments, if an installment becomes delinquent, the entire remaining principal balance of the assessment plus accrued interest becomes immediately due and payable at the option of the borough." I think that's a little bit harsh, myself. I, I was thinking of, if you have a, an LID and you have some people that didn't vote for it but are drug along and don't have a lot of money, um, all of a sudden, you've put them in a position that, man, not only do I own, oh, the $1,000 or whatever the amount was, but now I owe the $40,000 all of a sudden. I think that's a little harsh. I'd like to see us change that last sentence to read, to delete the entire remaining principal balance of the assessment and just say, if an, um, when an assessment is payable in installments, if an installment becomes delinquent, payment plus accrued interest becomes immediately due and payable at the option of the borough, rather than to go after the whole amount. That, I think that's a little harsh.
So that's all, that's a motion, how you'd like it reworded?
Yes.
Is there a second to that?
Can you restate, state that?
Okay, I'll read that, my.
The last sentence in C.
Yes, the last sentence. When an assessment is payable in installments, if an installment becomes delinquent, um, I would substitute now, rather, rather than the section, the entire remaining principal balance of the assessment, I would just, just delete that and put in there, payment. The payment, the payment plus accrued interest becomes immediately due and payable at the option of the borough.
I'll second that.
Um, discussion on that proposed amendment under section 412.110C?
Mr. Mayor, may I direct a question to someone?
Sure can.
Jody, is that, is that consistent with how we do property taxes in general?
There you go.
Sounds like a good idea, I just wanna make, if we can be consistent with how we do property taxes, that's probably a.
Our property taxes are all due at the same time, so. Oh, this is a little bit different because there's installments, but, um, set up. I guess there's one thing to think about, though. Perhaps we would put it on the tax bill with the other taxes, but what if the dates don't line up like that? And so we would do a separate tax bill, supplemental tax bill at a later time.
Well, and just to be clear, I mean, when they talk about a payment by installments, it could be a once-a-year payment. That's a payment by installments. If the Assembly said, we're gonna have this payable over 10 years, one payment a year, that's payment by installments.
I would hope that would be the case. That would be much easier, though.
Correct. I, I think that's what I had heard from Assemblymembers. I mean, so it potentially could be put on the property tax bill to save postage and everything else and added to. That's why I was asking about being consistent, is, you know, if we can?
Hopefully, it's always an option that someone could pay it in full right away, just to get it over with. But that's not always possible for everyone.
Yeah, and I don't have any problem with that, Steve. My problem is paying the entire, whatever that amount was.
And that makes total sense. I was just making sure if we can be somewhat consistent with how we do principal and interest, or penalties and interest on property tax with these assessments, it just makes it easier for staff to remember. It just makes it easier for staff to remember and speak to it. Thanks, Jody.
Okay, any other discussion on the amendment to section 412.110, section C, item C? You have it all written down there, Mindy? Okay?
I'm following you.
Good, clerk call the roll.
Eric?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Okay, any other amendments to the main motion as amended a few times? Okay, clerk call the roll on the main motion as amended.
Kurt?
Yes.
Mark?
You know, I've been explaining why I'm going to vote no for this, and I think it's, it's a little more complicated because of the Charter, the way the Charter's written. And we're trying to mirror that, and I think if we redid the Charter, we could maybe make the whole thing simpler. I think we're just trying to push this forward just because of the timing on this LID issue. And, uh, in my mind, I don't have enough of a positive feeling that it's going to all come together. And the effort being put into it could possibly be less